Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, we have four members and two guests tonight. Bill Cook notified me that he had a conflict and wouldn't be able to attend. This meeting of the Great Barrier and Affordable Housing Trust Fund is convened at six thirty-five. Pursuant to Governor Baker's uh March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And Governor Healy's subsequent March twenty-nine twenty-three revised order extending remote participation. This meeting in the Great Barrier and Affordable Housing Trust will be conducted by remote means to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members who the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so. See the agenda, no in-person attendance will be, uh, we have. Creisha, Joe Method, Ananda, Tim Payne, and myself Fred Clark attending uh electronics. And if others join, I will um make note of that. Excuse me. Figure out what the mute button is. We don't have a large agenda tonight. Um, I just did one I get together. I've been away. Um, and uh. This is a. Often a good time in May, in June for us to uh. Talk about the upcoming year. We're right recently through town meeting. Uh, we have a pretty good idea of what the financial picture is going to be going forward. Subsequent from town meeting from. At town meeting this year. We were awarded uh two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from CPA money. Uh, for any housing purpose that will be available uh at the beginning of the fiscal year. In addition, we got uh. I forgot now.
For some reason, I have a hundred and sixty-five thousand in my head. Is that possibly the number, Fred?
Two hundred and sixty-five thousand, I think, I mean.
No, this, there's a secondary amount, right? That's not CPA.
Yes, we were, we, I can. Why don't we start there? I have forwarded you, I don't know if you got it all, but uh. A copy of the click budget summary that um Chris put together. If you can see this on my screen. I uh, I don't know whether you can see it. Can you see this?
Yes, we, I can see it, but I can't see.
It's quite small. Can you enlarge?
Yes, I can.
That's perfect. Thank you. Maybe one more.
I have a very big monitor, so everything looks big to me. Is this adequate or I could keep going? Let me just walk you through this document. The highlighted portions in yellow, see the date in the upper right. The under general funds. Uh, I can't, I'm colorblind, so I can't tell you what color it is, but under the yellow there, it says a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is um unrestricted money that uh comes from the general funds. It is. Hopefully going to be a reoccurring amount. That uh allows us to do certain things that we. Uh, can't do necessarily because of uh. CPA restrictions. Creisha, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would like to find out whether we got all the money that we asked for from CPA and is there, if yes. Is there any way we can ask for more? Because I don't know if you know. Ian Rush's uh requests were strike, so, strike down by the.
Ian Rush is gonna, he was gonna refuse them anyway. Or at least, not the historic preservation, he would have accepted the historic preservation.
Yeah, well, we strength it out and, and so there is more money in CPA. So anyway, the first question is. Do, did we ask for that amount and we got it? Or, and second question is, can we ask for more money?
Sure. The answer to your first question is, we got on the bottom section where it says CPA funds and the highlighted amount. Yes, it's available seven-one. We received two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. That is the amount that we anticipated receiving. In October or November of twenty-twenty-two, we requested three hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, the CPA committee. Uh, interviewed. Our group, uh, the Housing Trust and decided that they didn't have confidence. In um seventy-five thousand dollars, so they reduced our request by seventy-five thousand. But the two hundred and sixty-five thousand that we received. Uh, is what we anticipated. It's, this is the amount that they presented to town meeting. Okay?
Yep.
I just want to highlight that we did receive money on general funds and money on CPA funds. This snapshot is accurate. Now, um. After the recent, the, on the April meeting, we voted uh construct uh rental assistance renewal. For fifty thousand dollars. That's reflected here. The other one that we reflected was uh. The gift or to the CDC for the purchase of the Sumner block. Uh, of a hundred thousand dollars. So those are uh listed as expenses here. Actually, this isn't the last, what is it? I, we actually had this uh slightly different, a different form. I uh had them zero out. Anyway, the bottom line number is the same. It's just where the money is coming from. If you'll see on the lower section, fiscal year eighteen, fiscal year nineteen and twenty. And what those uh levels were for. What I've asked Chris to do is to zero out the. Fiscal year eighteen, six thousand one hundred and forty-five and to zero out the fiscal year twenty. Thirty-five thousand dollars and take the fifty thousand dollar construct rental assistance. That's because I don't want to go back into const, into um. CPA with money that we've been hanging on to for five years. I want to zero these accounts out as much as possible. And I have a ref, uh, uh, the one I think I shared with you guys is I. I have three different versions of this. The one I shared with you, I think, is the one that, the correct one. I can throw it up on my screen if.
So which part is that going forward? How much money we have?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna look for a document quickly here. Talk amongst yourselves. Yeah, this is the correct one, so I'm gonna go back. This is a little more accurate and it will help the. This is the same basic numbers. The difference right now, and I'll make this a little bigger again. Is. That the fiscal year eighteen and the fiscal year twenty uh accounts have been zeroed out. With the money coming from them to pay for the rental assistance program. Again, we wanted, now, to answer your question. We were ca, we were carrying over about ninety thousand dollars in money into. The next year, we did get an additional two hundred and sixty-five thousand, which will. Uh, be available to us at the beginning of the fiscal year in July. If you look at the bottom line balance where it says CPA balance. We have three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars available to us. In addition, we have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of money that was sourced from the general fund. For a total of five hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and change. What I'd like to propose is that we consider that hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars as a separate kind of money. Uh, and we can talk about what that is. What I'd like to do is to. Use the advantages of that money uh to um. Help facilitate some programs going forward and use the CPA balance money for uh our grant programs. Does anybody, oh, Ananda, you have a question?
Yeah, I ju, I actually was just wanted to clarify that um the CPA orig, uh. Allender originally turned down the CPA's first set of conditions. The CPA then. There were, they, there was an additional step in the process and the CPA put forward a town meeting. Um, a recommendation of funding for two housing projects and that was turned down at town, voted down at town meeting. It would have subsidized the rent for ten years on two units in the um Mahawi block.
I was away, uh, I was in Europe um during town meetings, so I missed town meeting, but I did follow it. I was at all the CPA meetings last fall and at that time, the CPA cut the.
Right, that's correct. And then they held subsequent meetings.
Which I didn't attend.
Nor did I.
Are we allowed to uh attend the meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a public meeting like ours, so anybody can attend, but we would be the first of the public and speak and citizens speak.
Uh, thank you for that clarification, um.
I, I thought it might, it was an interesting, it was just an interesting set of developments in how the town is thinking about. What they will and won't.
Did they turn down the uh bowling alley as well or?
No, they, there was, uh, the, what I, my understanding was that there was a fair amount of enthusiasm for the bowling alley.
Yep.
Yeah, and basically the fifty thousand dollars was a very small portion of what they asked for. And it was going to be only a portion of the money to install sprinklers in the building. So, uh, you know, it was a, a, an issue where they were leveraging it, which our CPA committee loves. This is the money we're going to have. Now, we have, uh, I've been asking for the last few years to. Attend a C, to be invited to a CPA meeting to discuss. Uh, how we can work together. And I believe that uh that's going to happen in August of this year. What I wanted, every time we've been in front of the CPA. It's been an adversarial relationship. We've come in with. Uh, a claim or a proposal and they treat it as a. Us against them and we're one of many uh applicants at that point, as, as we should be. However. I've always contended that the Affordable Housing Trust is completely different than almost any other CPA applicant. We're a town board, we're created by town meeting, answerable to, to um, to the select board and to the uh. Open meeting law, procurement law, things like that. We're the one group that's going to be there every year. Uh, we're gonna be coming back and it makes sense for us to have an open discussion with the CPA meeting. Uh, about how. How we can work together. And I believe that's gonna happen this year in August. They have also uh the chair. And cohort have asked for um. A summary, which is what is in front of you right now, of uh where we've spent the money. Uh, and how much we had there. They were very concerned last year. That we were hoarding money, that we were building up a, a balance sheet and not being open about it, uh, which is. Uh, pretty far from, from, from the way we've always had acted with the CPA committee. Anyway, I'm gonna stop sharing now, uh. Uh, Creisha, do you have a comment again?
No, I have a question that I don't know when I can uh ask.
Ask anytime you like.
In relation to our money and or town money. And you probably know the answer for it. Uh, would town actually consider? But like I says, as I said, compound of six apartment is going for sale right now. And would town actually consider buying that compound and become a uh landlord? Would that, is that possible? Is that any, anybody's?
Well, I don't think that there's a mechanism for the town to do that. I don't think there would be much enthusiasm for the town. However, um. The Community Development Corporation has been doing exactly that. And used us, had a contribution from the town. Uh, in the form of ARPA money and we voted a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That building is called the Sumner Building that there, which building are you in?
I am on Rosetta Street and there are three buildings with. Uh, each building has two apartments and at this point is kind of affordable, like we paying thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, and it's been a historically portable area.
Yes.
There, uh, I am aware of some of the issues on Rosetta Street. It's unfortunate. Um, we're working against some extreme market forces. But it is something that we can explore with our partners at C, at CDC. I would.
You think I could, uh, I could uh contact CDC?
Sure, if you'd like to. Um, they kind of have their hands full right now because of this building that they just bought, but um. And plus the opening of the um, uh, new building. But it is something to consider.
This would pay the mortgage and would could bring the money, you know, it's. You definitely, it's not losing proposition, you know?
Uh, Ananda, did you have another comment?
I think that it's pretty clear that the town will not buy buildings to become landlords, so. And then the other thing is I think that um we should. Be aware how we have this conversation with conflict of interest. Um, I don't know how that works with a tenant raising a question about. A property that they are a tenant in, but.
Uh, those are good points. Certainly, uh, we will be concerned about that, but uh. I think when we're simply asking a preliminary. Inquiry, uh, and I believe that Creisha made it as if would the town consider buying a building? And then only followed up when I asked which building we were talking about. So I think that. If we don't take it any farther, I think we're fine. So, uh, I want to get back to the agenda a little bit. Um. The um. The minutes are not available, so we're passing over those items. Uh, I'm gonna have to work with our recorder. Who's had some uh personal issues. In terms of memberships to be re, reappointed, the terms of Bill Cook, John Katz. And Garfield Reed are all up this year. Bill has indicated that he would. Uh, like to be reappointed and I'm sure that will be no problem. I have not talked to Garfield or to John Katz. Uh, and I will try to. Follow up on that. Um, the May meeting or sometimes in June is the time when we do annual reorganization. We only have two, I'll call them constitutional offices, that is a chair and a vice chair. Uh, we don't have uh any other officers. Those appointments are reconfirmed or made annually. I would su, submit to you, and we have to do it before the, the first of the year. Uh, Bill Cook has indicated to me that he does not want to be chair. So, uh, he was previously chair. I am happy to remain as chair and um if there's anyone else who is interested. Please let me know now. It largely, I'm, has a lot of administrative issues to deal with in terms of. Making sure the Zoom works and like that. So I think we should go ahead and couldn't make the formal process of reconfirming the chair. Uh, I nominate myself, Fred Clark, to be chair for the additional year. Does anyone care to second that?
Second.
Second, Creisha, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Creisha?
Yeah.
Joe?
Uh, yes.
And Ananda?
Hi.
Thank you, and, and the chair votes I as well. Uh, the second officer is uh vice chair. I nominate Bill Cook to be vice chair. Second, please.
Second.
Second, uh, Creisha, Joe, Ananda. Okay, vice chair, got it. Very quick process. Uh, we have to do that, so I, I want to go forward. I would like to use this time in May, June and, and, and all to uh talk about an annual calendar. Uh, in, in a, in a budget. Uh, a year ago, I put together a budget. Which isn't really so much a budget as a roadmap of how we anticipated we'd be spending our money. We had seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for the uh, in, in, I can throw that document up if you like. Here. Budget. Zoom. Excuse me for my. This is not reflecting of the current um. Funding here, but this is what I thought we would be spending money on. Uh, during this last year. You can see that we had seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for down payment assistance. We ended up not using that money. We did use the money for the emergency rental assistance on that line. The development of three to four units on Mahawi Pope, I budgeted it a hundred and forty thousand based on some preliminary discussions. We ended up not using that money. The Marble Block ended up morphing into the Sumner Block. And we used the money that might have gone for the. Mahawi Pope Development, a hundred thousand dollars. So there's a case where. Even though it didn't have a number in it, we did end up using that there. And then seventy-five thousand dollars was budgeted for the ADU. Uh, program. The North Plain Road parcel, that's money that's outside of our direct control right now. Uh, uh, as a grant that came into the town, uh, that Chris is administering. So this is kind of a roadmap of what I thought a year ago we would spend money on. I'd like to still try to use to revive the down payment assistance program. Well, there's, and, and I have some ideas on that that we can talk about. The Mahawi Pope development is still a viable project and um. Will probably be between a hundred and forty and two hundred thousand dollars, our contribution. The last we talked, there was about four uh homeowner type units that would be available down there. And, you know, depending upon what we do with the ADU tiny house project. Uh, I think that's a reasonable number to start with uh going forward, so. Ananda, what's uh, what's up?
I'd like to propose that we think about um the budget a little differently.
Okay.
Also, it could allow us to streamline our process throughout the year and um. I think it needs some discussion and thought. Given how the CPA process works on the front end, um. But I would, it would be ideal if over time we could bring CPA, CPA along with this type of approach. If we thought about the types of ways we invest and, and kind of blocked those out. Rather than always individual projects. And so we're already doing that with the down payment assistant program. And the rental assistance and um also. The ADU pilot, if we do that. So it's like a category of funding and there's ways it can be applied for, so. The rental assistance in essence is something that the applications, it's an individual application that goes directly to construct. The ADU would be also an individual application. It would come directly to us. Um, the down payment assistance is also an individual application. It comes directly to us via the town. The. I propose that we take this other group of funding where we have funding available for projects. That other applicants may apply to us for. And we say, this is how much funding we're gonna set aside, and this is how you apply for it, and this is how we. Make decisions about that. And that would give us space to kind of work through our process. Is it just a first, first come, first served basis? Um, do we have particular deadlines in the year? I don't have strong opinions about that part. But I do think it would be helpful for us to get to kind of game plan a process around that. Um, ideally, and this is not a secret from people I talk to on the CPA. Um, I really think that we should, as a town, be moving for, towards a model where our Affordable Housing Trust has the administrative capacity. I really think that we should as a town be moving for towards a model where our affordable housing trust has the administrative capacity. For this CPA to. To basically divert all of the eligible affordable housing funds. To the Affordable Housing Trust for. In order that it is accessible over a twelve month period rather than at a single application time. And that would maximize the town's ability to be responsive to projects as they come up. I think doing something like this would start to set the administrative stage to move in that direction. And then I do think there's a final category, which is the pot that we reserve for. For purchases, things that, things with the Affordable Housing Trust. It whether it's the work we've, we've done on North Plain Road, or I think there are other ideas that have come. That have come up from time to time where we essentially are purchasing something in order to launch a project.
I, I, yes, I see Joe nodding his head. I think Krishna's on board as well. I, I, it's fine. Yes. We've said for many years that there are other towns. Who have CPA and Affordable Housing Trusts. Who manage their projects and their process. Differently than we do here. The town of Yarmouth, for instance, has a. A percentage. That of all of the CPA money. That is given over to the Affordable Housing Trust in that town. In order to do. Have a steady income stream of. Sixty percent or whatever it is of. Of all the affordable housing, I'm sorry, the CPA money. We're unique in that. Not a lot of towns have places like Construct and. CDC making direct applications. Rather than going through. I see you have a follow up. I don't. I don't have anymore to say, so. Can't hear you.
Joe, I don't know if you wanted to say something before I jump in again.
Oh. No, I just, I agree with. The, the vision that you laid out. Is all.
Yeah, Fred, I would, in terms of CDC and Construct. I would see it as a way to actually make funding more accessible to them. Not as a competition with them, and I don't, like, I don't think our CPA is ready to go there yet. I think. I think that it's a. It's probably a work that will take multiple years if we could get our town to this place. We could do this year that would help start. Building the foundation. Would be to start to. Build kind of these buckets in our budget rather than being so project tied that. And start to build out what the process is, how each bucket is accessed. Or, you know, in the case of. Kind of where we're casting the net. And on the lookout for. The opportunities also being able to be like. Having some vision around that, like, that could be something Fred where like there's a monthly update. On what might be available. But that we've kind of made a commitment and how we're thinking about our budget. By having a bucket of, of funding that's available, and if that does for some reason. Build up from one year to the next, it would only be to the advantage in the moment that you have an opportunity.
So the other.
So one thing I was thinking about was. Why don't we try in the next year to get a. Either a select board. Promoted or citizens petition to. Make those bylaw changes. X percent goes directly to Affordable Housing Trust. Sorry, what?
Of the CPA?
Actually, did any of you attend the? The town meeting? I seem to be hearing at that meeting, and unfortunately. I didn't hear it perfectly. That there is going to be a reduction of the CPA money. Next year. That's why somebody actually suggested that. The money that we didn't give away. Will go back to the CPA. And will be used next year, so, and I don't know how to check that and. But I seem to be hearing that during the meeting.
The CPA funds have to do with.
Taxes.
Taxes, and so I wonder if the.
I think they didn't make enough money as they were expecting. And because of that, they will cut down.
Yeah.
Not sure.
Well.
This year, they had enough funds to cover all of the requests. Came in, there were a couple they. Pursue. But they would have had, they had more money available than, than they recommended to the town.
And they. The funding does vary from year to year, like when I've looked at. All the years to date, it's not a consistent amount, so I don't know that that's abnormal. Joe, my understanding is, and Fred, you may know this in more detail, my understanding is there are current, like. In the way the CPA law works en masse. There are current percentages minimums on. Three categories.
It's ten percent.
And so as in absence.
Percent historic, ten percent open space and recreation.
Yeah, and then there's an, an amount that can be reserved for administration, correct?
I believe so.
Right, so basically. Like Lennox, for example, they basically max out then, they're like, okay, there's going to be ten percent for open space recreation and ten percent for historic. And whatever they have to have for their admin, and then everything else they pass through. To affordable housing, to the Affordable Housing Trust. Again, like. For my friends on CPA. Who are listening because we're so riveting. I don't think, I'm not suggesting that our community is ready to do that this year, but I do think. It's a good thing to build towards, and I actually do think it would be an appropriate response to the housing crisis. Even at some point in the future, the community wants to. Invest more in one of the other areas. Right now in a housing crisis, I think that would be an appropriate response, and it would maximize the flexibility for organizations like Construct. And CDC to access funds throughout the year.
Yeah, I, I, I guess. I don't, I don't see why we would limit our ambitions. To like two years or three years down the line.
I just don't think that the, I don't think we're anywhere near the CPA voting to. To allocate that percentage.
Well, no, what I'm saying, I'm saying. You're, you're talking about Lee or you're talking about like Lennox. That they must, you're saying that, that the CPA. They voted themselves into that thing because it's probably a bylaw, right?
No.
Why don't we do as a bylaw? I'm saying, why don't we do a bylaw?
Oh, like requiring the maximum amount?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, just because. Because the CPA, you know, it lets towns. It gives towns like all this guidance, like you don't have to have Affordable Housing Trust, like, it's like a suggestion to have one. And have an Affordable Housing Trust, but then we're. In this situation where we're also begging for the money. And we could say, no, you know. I, I, to me. My gut instinct is if you ask the town in this climate. You know, I mean, I think people will probably go for. You know, and it's but, and also it doesn't have, it could be like you could do as a citizen's petition. But it seems to me that probably. Probably, you know, I, I don't want to speak for anybody, but it seems that we would probably have some sympathetic people on select board. I don't know, yeah, I feel like it's worth. I don't know, why not, you know? I guess the why not is that maybe CPA would feel we're taking power away from them, but. You know.
It would definitely feel that.
But I mean, but, but I don't know, I mean, and then like they'll punish us for it.
But I think that it's not, it's not just CPA, it's beyond that. I think that there are certain people who want to make sure that. The projects that we spend money on. They have some input on. They're concerned that. If we were given carte blanche. That we might use.
But CPA is not, CPA is not elected either, like, like, I mean, I would, I would make the argument, I don't. I don't totally understand why, why Affordable Housing Trust isn't an elected committee. You know, because it's, because ideally it would be very powerful and have a lot of money to throw around, and then it. It would be like finance, you know. But I don't, I don't, I don't see that Affordable Housing Trust is like any less legitimate than CPA. You know, in, in terms of accountability, it's like, they, we both have meetings.
You're, you're right on a certain level, but I think that. The practicality is that if we. Were to make this proposal. A number of people would be. As the CPA does right now. Asking, well, what are you going to do with it? You know, and we're going to say.
We're going to build that housing with it, like, that's what we're going to, we're going to build housing with it.
Well, they want to know.
And, and, and I, and I, and I feel like the, in terms of the politics of it. The, the, the politics, you'd say, well, last year you recommended giving money to Ian Rash, which is like kind of. Arguably is, is, is poor judgment. I mean, if you want to get into the politics of it, that's, that's, that, that, and I, and I think that would. At town meeting, if you're talking about that, like, that's how you make the arguments, it's like. Give the housing money to the committee that deals with housing.
I, you know, you know, I agree with you, but I don't think that your argument is going to be successful. By, by telling the CPA that they made errors last year.
We don't have, but, but my whole point is, I'm, I'm saying go around them. I'm saying go to the town. It, like, it has nothing to do with them, and then, and. And the only like danger is that they'll like watch this video. And be angry and punish us, which is not, that's not a thing that can fly in town government, so. You know, I'm just saying, I'm saying, why don't we just do it? And I, I mean. Worst case scenario, like, I will put it up for, for town petition. Anyways, that's, that's, that's my, that's my thought.
You've made your point, Ananda?
I mean, I won't say too much more about that idea, I. I would, what I would add to the. Conversation for consideration about like different roles is that the CPA has. A requirement to be made up of representatives from different. Different parts of town government already. And I also just have questions about whether or not you, whether or not it is. Under the. CPA laws, whether. You can add a bylaw that dictates a certain percentage has to go to a certain entity or not. So I just would have questions about that. I think. No matter what. That would be a question for May twenty twenty-four and then budget year. Twenty twenty-six. And. That we, no, no matter how. Like if we, no matter what path we choose, if we get so, if we find success. In. Increasing significantly or even having the maximum funds possible allocated in CPA dollars. To the Affordable Housing Trust. Either however we get there, should we be so fortunate to get there, we need. To be doing the same work now internally about building processes and. Yeah, building processes and oversight muscles. I mean, our Affordable Housing Trust is relatively new, right, Fred, like. We're only a few years in, and so the more competency we show, the easier. Things become for us, the clearer our oversight practice. The easier it will be for us to make. Whatever argument to whichever body for increased funding, because we will be, we will have a track record of efficacy that continues to grow. And I would argue that we have a track record of efficacy, like. We have not had very much money and we've done a great deal with it. I think we have some philosophical questions about how we approach some of the, the. Larger scale projects, and I would argue those are the same questions the CPA faced with at the Allender proposal. And I think there's a lot of. I think there are reasons there are ill will in the community towards the Allender proposal, but if we took that history off the table about what was happening with. Other historical funds and how people do or don't feel like that, and just looked at like. A question like, well, would we consider, I mean, these projects. On things like the Mahawi Block, on the marble block building, I mean, the reason CDC had to pull out of Marble Block. The, the size of the investment to. Restore these buildings that have not been cared for adequately. To. To basic level to be able to continue to be livable and rentable is. It's. I mean, it's huge numbers. And so I think that, like, I think we also could be faced with a question about is it. Is a way we would use funding on one of those projects, because we'll never have a huge chunk of funding for that. To subsidize ten years of a, of one unit. Would we ever do that, or would we subsidize two units for ten years? Because essentially that's what the Allender proposal was, that. They'd take two units off of market. And subsidize the rent for the renter with the CPA funds.
For the record, I've always felt that Allender's math was, was fuzzy. So. Anyway, Krishna, you, you have your hand up, do you want to speak?
I have two questions. Sorry, I am not informed, but you mentioned that the CDC had to pull out of the Marvel. Project.
Yeah.
Happening. Somebody else is buying that?
As of today, it's still up for sale. I do not believe it's under agreement.
Okay, so they gave us money back or?
Yes, we revoked it.
Okay.
We had a meet, at one of the meetings, I don't believe you were there. We voted to rescind. The grant we had made in. January. Perhaps December. A grant to purchase the marble block. Subsequent to that vote. The CDC got into it. They decided that it wasn't a project that they wanted to go forward with. Due to certain condition issues. And. They were lucky enough to find another. Main Street building. That had historically affordable apartments in it. In much, much better shape. And they. Came in with a second proposal to purchase that block. That building is called the Sumner Block. And. Basically for us, we rescinded the grant for the first project. Use that funds. To give them to the second project. And basically secured. Deed restricted rental. Units. In downtown.
Okay, thank you so much, and I have a comment on the. Proposal by Amanda. I so totally not agree with. Subsidizing for ten years. I'm in a situation right now that I've been renting for twenty years. I am. Seventy-one years old. And if my rent now doubled, I would never be able to. To stay here. Ten years of subsidizing is wasting of the money. The money can be much better used in your other ideas that you've had. With the. Those units that people build. Onto their houses. I think that's, that's, that could be forever. You know, that, that particular thing, so. That's my opinion, thank you.
Yeah, and basically we have not entertained. Limited. Time limited deed restrictions. Deed restrictions that we obtained through both the. Well, the town. Through the Windflower project and for. The Sumner project are in perpetuity. They're. They have a mechanism going forward. Similarly, the habitat projects on North Plain Road. Will be in perpetuity. Those will be more like Forest Row in terms of the structure of. Uh, allowing people to make a profit, uh but limiting how the resale of of the projects. I guess the best.
Not exactly, but with example.
Habitat's got a better Habitat's got better controls.
Yeah.
Isn't it correct that purchases, I think Chris Rembold brought this up, Joe, the other night. Um, that purchases by the Affordable Housing Trust have to be in in perpetuity.
And part of the law that if we use CPA money and we purchase a property. Either purchase the land or was we did on North Plain Road or purchase a building. It then has to be uh deed restricted in perpetuity. However, if we give. A grant to CDC and they purchase it. It is uh not the same, not the same as we purchased in the building.
Discretion at what we request. And require.
Yes.
Does have to be, there does have to be an affordable housing restriction of some type. If we for anything that we are involved in.
Basically, yes, I think there are some exceptions, but yes.
Um, so uh with with my understanding of of Ananda's um. Uh, like the idea of having different buckets of funding. What I was envisioning is um. So I think I think you were kinda talking about like like rolling, sort of like rolling like as as the. At a different point of the year, having different amounts of money, but um I think what would be really attractive is to actually have like. A certain like every year. Uh, having like a a a yearly, you know, just like um grant. Uh, uh like proposal period with like a deadline and everything. And to say something like in advance, say like, you know, say. We have two hundred thousand dollars or we have three hundred thousand dollars. And that three hundred thousand dollars, we don't know how we wanna divide it up. Come to us with the proposals for for how how you propose to create affordable housing. And and I would say probably we would say like. Uh, and and here are the criteria that here's the rubric that we're gonna use. The rubric is, you know, it's like extra plus plus good if it's in perpetuity. It's, you know, it's extra good, you know, but if you're if you're only gonna promise, you know. Uh, a hundred percent AMI for ten years, like we'll we'll talk about it. Um, but we wanna know like like the the investment to return ratio. And just like start off with that and just say like 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 given this money. How are you like? How many units can you create given this money? And it's like just kind of reverse reverse the polarity of what we do. And you know, it's just like we don't, we don't sit around thinking about how to. Properties, we wait for them, you know, we ask them to come to us. And then and then if a lander comes and they say, you know, we can do this for a hundred thousand, we can do this for whatever, it's apples to apples. You know, it it then then it's then it's like, it's either a good deal or it's not a good deal. Like I I was I was, I don't know. Um, I'll I'll just censor myself. Um, but uh, um, yeah, a- a- and. A- a- in principle, I don't think it's, I don't think it's offensive to say that. There's this amount of money to to guarantee that something is 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 affordable for ten years. I just think that there's probably better ways to spend that money. Um, and and but you know, if you have the money and and that turns out to be the best deal around, then you take it. So I would I would do it that way and just let let CDC and construct come and just make make the offer. Um, and I and in that case, then it's and again, it's I I think it's like. I think it is backwards. Um, it's backwards to to have to go. To an authority and say, we're gonna tell you all the projects that we're gonna use this money for. If there are certain projects that can't happen without the large chunk of money. Like if the large chunk of money is like what makes the thing happen, especially when it comes to multifamily. Because I think multifamily is actually that's the that's the Holy Grail. To build large, large multifamily. Um, and if if somebody says like, you know, that three hundred thousand plus this. This two hundred thousand like that, that makes the deal come together. And then, but we can't get the three hundred thousand together because we have to earmark everything.
Okay, I think we understand. Uh, Krishna, I think you were first.
Uh, no, um, I'm done.
Okay, Ananda.
Um. So I'm wondering if a next step could be, so Fred, were you saying in the June meeting is when you'd like us to kind of set course for the year with a budget?
Uh, it makes sense to me because that's when we get refunded. So I'm still thinking of funding sources and what's restricted on those funding sources.
Right, so July, like July one is the start of the next fiscal year, so you'd like us to go into July from a June meeting where we've said, here's our. Here's our budget.
Uh, yeah, you know, maybe budget's not the right idea, maybe roadmap is a is a better idea. The same thing. And then thinking about the annual, excuse me, thinking about the annual calendar. We need to refresh uh in beginning in September to put. The phase one of the um CPA application for fiscal. Twenty five, I guess, the money that we would get. In the Springtown meeting and to be available in July of uh twenty four. But that comes around very quickly because by September, we need to have a number. Put together and the experience to date, which could change. Is the CPA committee wants to have breakouts. They wanna have. Where is, how did you come up with this number? What are you gonna do with this number? And uh, how ready are you to spend it? So to me, that makes sense. Maybe we devote. Some part of the early summer. Um, to looking at those kinds of ideas there.
Yes, but the FY twenty four budget is separate issue from the FY twenty five. CPA budget application. What what we start the proposal process in September for is actually for FY twenty five.
Correct.
Yeah, so what I'd like to propose is that in the June meeting, we look at. Um, assigning amounts, like we decide how many buckets we want for our budget, basically how many line items we have. And we assign the amounts to them. Um, I think that it's reasonable and Joe, you can jump on. I think that it's reasonable. That we will have the ADU pilot proposal. Um, for. A vote available, so that could come be, that could come early on in the meeting and feed into the budget discussion. And then we have the budget by July and that we try, that that gives us space to talk through the idea of moving from a project based. Budget to a budget that talks about types of uses. Um, and I get what you're saying about that there's a trickiness with the CPA because they're not there with us yet. Um. And I think it's the same trickiness that we already have when we have to go in September and anticipate what the specific project is gonna be. In in July, a year after that, um.
Well, even even six months after that, you know, we're. That's where they cut money this year because I was trying to explain to them. That during fiscal year twenty four, perhaps six months in, we would be spending money on in the ADU program. And they said, no, you're not ready for it yet. Well, yeah, because there was an eighteen month lead time. At that point and. Um, as it turned out, so you know, in terms of buckets, I don't see the, I mean, I think that. We have these programs which can have their own bucket. Semantics, you know, and I think that then we talk about what we do in terms of development. I agree. That you and Joe are talking about turning it. Instead of. Waiting for proposals to come in, going out and seeking, uh, you know. Proposals can come from a much wider audience or constituents. Uh, than just construct and CDC, you know, try to get beyond just construct and CDC when we 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 keep going. So I I I think that that is the major change, as I understand it, uh, going forward. I would like to see.
At to that point, that is not what I'm saying. That's Joe's idea. The pilot, the ADU pilot is structured that way for the pilot, but doesn't address whether we'd continue it that way, and I would actually make an argument. To not have a deadline for um. Investing it. So I that's why I'm saying like if in June, we could we could. We could decide if we wanna move forward using um. Using what I've been calling buckets, but essentially they'd be line items for. A more a a programmatic purpose and saying that there's a acquisitions line item and then a. Um, a line item that is for developers to apply to. Um, that in June, then we could discuss some of the the questions that would come out of moving to that structure, including. The advantages or disadvantages of having a rolling application.
You stood, and I I think we can talk about that, you know, I I think we're all on board with with that idea. Uh, of going forward. So and and I think that that's good to have a a roadmap, a a a programmatic. Uh, perspective. I think we have to, otherwise we're flailing in the dark.
Yeah.
And if it turns out that. One of those items, one of our programs isn't successful. We, you know, need to do a forensic analysis to figure out why it's not successful. Were our expectations or assumptions uh flawed? Uh, are we not promoting it properly? Is it underfunded or overfunded? Um, how can, you know, is it's not providing. Um. A reasonable return on the amount of resources that it's using, both staff and. Uh, financial, so you know. I would like to, as I wanna say, is I would like to take it on to try to revise. The Down Payment Assistance Program because I think conceptually it works. We've just been really threatened by it. The new AMI numbers were supposed to be released uh on the fifteenth of May, which was yesterday. I haven't checked today. Uh, I looked yesterday, I couldn't find them. Um, so the 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 adjustment for the AMI will go up. What I'd like to do, what I'm proposing to do is to put together. An outreach document, call it a press release, whatever you wanna call it, that uh goes back to our. The people on the front lines who talk to people who are buying houses. In the mortgage and and banking community, in the real estate community. And say, hey, guess what? The if you've had a client who. Couldn't qualify before, maybe they can now. There are new AMI guidelines that have increased, I don't know. Nine percent, maybe the rate of inflation, who knows? And um. In that way, try to revive the program, so. Um. Uh, we are still talking to Carol and the CDC about some development opportunities. Uh, I need to get back to her about. Uh, where they wanna go forward. I assume that, you know, I know that Bill has been a proponent. And I assume that, you know, if we can do that, it was it, we have the. We have the money right now if we chose to spend it in that way. Uh, and I think it would give us a reasonably good um. Return for the the commitment, and that is for units for something between a hundred and forty and two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I'm gonna pursue that um. Beyond that, um, I put on the list.
I'm sorry, which project is that? Sorry.
It's not really a project yet. It's still uh still in the talking phase. Um. There is a pro- a project in the Mahawi Pope area. That was offered to the Affordable Housing Trust at a below market rate. Uh. We talked to, we meaning Bill and I, talked to CDC about taking over that project. They were enthusiastic about it. Uh, they talked about using it as a pilot for a new kind of development project. The project would um result in basically two. Two met, two family houses, but they would all be uh owned by. There'd be condos, basically. They would all be owned separately with a house. So there'd be four units of affordable housing. Uh, in this area. If the project.
Around months?
Uh, well, it's a million dollars, but uh, you know, uh. For us, the commitment would be. A minimum of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But perhaps as much as two hundred.
And the CDC would be buying it or what?
So that would be, that that would be like fifty thousand per 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 family? Oh, no, but it's it's a condo, so it's. Fifty thousand per affordable.
We would be subsidizing the units about fifty thousand dollars each in this plan.
So this kind of answers my question, the original question. Whether town or affordable housing is open to buying the buildings.
Right, it also kind of makes it. It just raises interesting process questions as we think forward because we've had success initiating partnerships and that's why I like. The whole North Plain Road project came about by us initiating it, right? Um. And. It does reveal like a bias in the system because we aren't out initiating projects with individual. Landlords, like the case that was discussed earlier about Rossiter Street.
We can look at the North Plain Road pluses and minuses. Um. And I think that it would be useful uh to study that and to see, you know, we already feel that. When we started that five years ago or so. It felt like the way we should be doing things. It felt like we could. Use a a a reasonable amount of money to leverage. Both a a grant money and uh twenty units of housing. The downside is I've been told is it's taken an enormous amount of staff time. By staff time, that means Chris Rambold, because he's the only staff. Uh, that the town has available. Uh. And it's taken, it'll take. Six, eight. Years, maybe even longer before uh all of those housing units come online. And I think that there may be ways that we can. Um, as you say, do it differently. In other words, it's not a model that we should be replaced, we're replicating. At infinitum going forward because of the the difficulties and because of the lead time.
Part purchasing existing buildings, it's much faster process. Than building.
Well, the North Plain Road has its pluses and minuses. The plus is that we are going to be delivering twenty housing units to the market that desperately needs them. Uh, it is gonna take, I'll just say eight years. From the conception to uh occupancy, uh, and that's way too long. To affect the market. Um, anyway.
So my just um about, I get, I think we're gonna discuss it, but um. Uh, at a different at a different meeting, but um my thought about the Mahawi Pope. Is it sounds great, but why don't we just reverse it and say we have two hundred thousand dollars? We have two hundred thousand dollars. Who would like to apply for it? Just do it like with that. And then. And if I guess we would maybe say like we have two hundred thousand dollars that we're, that we wanna go towards homeownership or something. But um. But I I I I feel like that would be, and then like, and then if construct is a constructor CDC, anyway, but if they. If CDC, you know, if they're the only ones to apply for, it's great. Or, you know, just have a rubric that says. These are the things we value. So for, for subsidized hous- uh, housing units. For fifty thousand each is okay. But you know, can anyone do better?
There's a really knife edge that we have to be careful about. We can't sus- we can't structure the R. RFP so carefully that only CDC could apply for it under this project. That would be considered uh bias. We need to have it more open. And once we do that. We're subject to uh. Lots of different. Oh, well, which we could have other proposals that come in. And instead, if we're we're not careful, uh Ian Rush could come in and ask for two hundred thousand for one unit. Uh, i- i- in that, in that case, and if he meets the criteria and we reject him. And take another one, we are subject to a lawsuit and uh we have to be very, very, very careful about. How we write both the rubric and the RFP.
Yeah, but but I feel like it's a good problem to have. Um, because if if it's a better proposal, it's a better proposal. I don't know, I'm just.
So easy. I mean, a better, better on whose terms, you know?
Well, the the Affordable Housing Trusts, I think that's the point. I mean, the. Question I have is how does? How does approaching a partner? Differ in terms of? Process around biases biases.
Yep.
And I also see he, like in this, like, this is what, like, I'm mostly interested in the conversation. I think there's a high. There's high value to me in the conversation. I think we're ready for as an affordable housing trust. We have enough experience. Um. So I I have questions that I think are valuable to talk through because I, I think that um. Being able to be nimble and do things that other bodies can't has. Um, is something that we might want to be able to retain. And also, I want to think through. Um. I wanna think through accessibility and basically, Joe, what I hear you talking about is competition. Could be part of how we get to some of the strongest proposals that shift what's happening in the community. Um, but I am like thinking about, it's interesting that in this meeting, we kind of have two. Um, similar size housing blocks in different parts of town that exist currently. And um the, if a body like the Affordable Housing Trust could be part of keeping them. Of like reasonably affordable housing. Um, but the right now, there's only an avenue in our process for one of them. Um. And. And so I just wanna, like, I just think it's, it's a good time for us to be able to actually start talking about that um and build. Processes that we think will be. The the best for our community. And then to your point, Fred, like, I think you're right, like, we do, we should be doing a really. Careful assessment and analysis when something isn't working and we should be. Evaluating on an annual basis what we're doing and tweaking it. Um, and that's why, like, with the ADU pilot, that's why. I wanted to structure it as a pilot because I want us to be able to throw the whole thing out or be like. It has to, it needs a major revision, but it's worth it.
Right.
Or be like, we were amazing and it was perfect.
Yeah.
I don't, like, that's probably not gonna happen, though.
Well, I'm sure it's gonna be very helpful.
It'll be something and we'll learn something. That that is gonna be true if we, if we decide to go on.
Okay, I I think we've talked around the edges of this quite a bit. Um. Do you, moving on, do you wanna tell us anything about your ADU workshop? I gather you had a meeting, uh.
Sure. A meeting with um Joe, Bill and I, present as members of the committee and Chris Rambold, which was. Our goal for that meeting, we had a couple areas. We wanted to make sure we had Chris's input and that we were moving forward with. Um, the insights from the town side and the administrative side. Um, so we have finalized our recommendations on the applicant criteria, criteria. Um, we're very. We wrote, we know the direction we're going on the tenant requirement and 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 the administrative function there. There's just some, a little bit of detail follow up. Um, we spent the bulk of the meeting really working through the loan structure. With Chris and Chris's input brought some really um helpful new ideas to the table. So there's some important follow up there that will feed into our next meeting and the remaining um parts of our work are. Um. Developing the concept for the marketing plan, um making identif- making our recommendation on the bu- for the budget line. And then um fleshing out the applicant, application selection process. From app, like, from the application process through selection. Um, and I think that we can do that in one more meeting if we're focused, Joe. Um, we also, we also did word add, we did some editing to, for clarity on the purpose. That that came out of the first meeting was to clear to. Um, have better word, better wording for clarity on the purpose of the project.
It sounds very impressive.
Don't know that it will be very impressive, but it will have solid work behind it.
Um. I look forward to seeing it uh. Come to the whole committee. Let me know when you wanna put that on the agenda.
My hope is that we can do that in June. I think it would be helpful for the the timeline you're laying out. Um. Okay, very thorough discussions, though, so there is that.
Um, do you wanna do, um, do you wanna, or but do you wanna wrap up? Do you wanna just do, um? Uh, committees, committee speak and everything?
Yeah, um, you know, I put a on a couple other things on the agenda, uh. I would like to uh discuss, not tonight, but. Some revisions to the down payment assistance program. Right now, we have a zero, and and what I have in mind is a forgiveness pro- proponent. Uh, right now, we have a loan program where if. We loan you twenty-five thousand dollars towards the purchase of a house. Um, we expect to have that back when you sell the house. And I think that that's a disincentive for some people. Lennox and Williamstown in their Affordable Housing Trusts. Uh, have a forgiveness program, and I don't remember whether it's five years or ten years or seven years. And we could uh do that. I'd like to see if. We can use that as a tool to to help to uh incentivize. You have to still be owner occupied, so you can't, you know. Own the house for three years and then, you know, oh, wait, if I keep it for two more years, I get this money back. I'm gonna rent it out for two years and then sell it. Uh, you have, still have to be owner occupied. So I I would like to propose that going forward. Uh, and what I think I need to do is to get examples from uh at least Lennox or Williamstown. Uh, to to show uh the language there. Um, I'm still interested in looking at abandoned houses. I haven't done anything. I was away for a while. Um. Uh, and anything else. Um. I don't have anything more on the agenda, and as Joe suggested, it's approaching eight o'clock, which is when we typically try to wrap up. Uh, are there any members who have any other comments uh or any other suggestions, ideas?
Um, so just real quick, um, I just wanted to, um. I just want, it's not like a disclosure, but I just wanted to be clear, um. Uh, when I applied for the 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 trust, I said that I was a software developer. And then when I was going through the um conflict stuff, I was like, oh, wait, I'm a, I'm a software developer for a company that is a property manager. So, and I I just by coincidence, it's it's AppFolio. So, um. Uh, my understanding, it's a, it's like a distant conflict or dis- distant, whatever. Um, I don't have any knowledge of. Like what, I don't have any knowledge of like which which landlords uh work for them or anything like that. Um, so I just wanted to, um, I. I sent an email to the ethics, whatever, and that was like, it's like been like. A month and a half or something, but anyways, just just wanted that to be on the record.
I think that it's such a fine, such a far distant. I I will say, you know, these committees are often made up of people with. A level of expertise from the professional world. And so it's not unusual to have people that have uh. Tangential relationships uh to the world of property management in 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 construction. And consider it be helpful, so. Okay, um. So, uh, media time. I see Eileen Mooney's with us. Eileen, do you have anything you wanna say? I can allow you.
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Did you get a copy of the budget?
Yes.
Good. Uh, and we also have Vivian Orlovsky uh. With us, Vivian, do you uh have a comment or do you wanna address us?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, Fred. Um, actually, I didn't have any questions, but um I would appreciate um. Getting um digitally, uh, the email attachment or whatever, or a link. Uh, the paperwork that you showed, both the spreadsheet and then um. Uh, your your budget breakdown was very interesting, but it was hard. For me to follow. I'm I'm more of a visual person with the, look at things and think about it than just hear things, you know, on the run. So, uh, how could I, um, how could you send, could you send that to me or is there some other way you suggest I could get access?
You've got Echo Motive a Gmail, is that?
Echo Motiva, yeah.
I can, I have your email address.
Yeah.
Uh, I can send you that, please be aware that the program budget. Is a obsolete. Uh, dates from last November and uh was sent as sort of a framework more than. Which we're going to replace. So I don't know if you want that still or not, but um.
Yeah, we give me background for when you, you know, discuss things more currently in in June.
Well, please understand that it's a, an obsolete document that uh. Is is is. Not relevant right now. I do have your email address on my uh.
Uh, how about the the spreadsheet that you started with at the beginning? It it is, is that the budget? I mean, the one that had the color coded amounts and everything.
Is uh that, our funds are held by the town. And uh, Chris Rambold is our staff contact person. He ran a. What do you call it? A a snapshot of where our budget is. And he added the highlight uh to it. I certainly can share that with you uh as well and and I have given it to Eileen already.
Yeah, I attended the meeting, uh, seems like just a few days ago with. That Ananda, the subcommittee that that Ananda facilitated. Um. It, do you have, or or Ananda, if you're still there, do you have? Um, any documentation from that that you could share about the accessory? Uh. Accessory dwelling um um plan?
We should also have minutes from that. So, I mean, I can share the document that we're working on, but it's, it's a. It's, it's just, uh, it's just a document we're using to workshop the pro- the proposal, so it's not a proposal. It's not on our, it's, it's not, um. It's not a lot of things. It just is what it is.
Just put draft on it and I certainly understand because I did attend your meeting, so I certainly understand that.
But I was gonna say, it's like, it it's not even really a draft of something, cuz it's a, it's to facilitate making the com- the decisions. I'm happy to share it and you can reach out to me and I will send, I will reply.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Without objection, uh, the meeting uh is um. Concluded. Thank you, everybody. The next meeting is scheduled for the third Tuesday of June, June twentieth at six thirty PM. Thank you, everybody, for your contributions. Good night.